Hi Moms, welcome, 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 welcome to the Moms for America podcast. I'm Debbie Corlett is your host. Thanks for joining us once again. We absolutely love it when you stop by and hang out with us. Every week we gather together to inspire, encourage, and educate each other in our journey through motherhood. We believe that liberty begins at home and that you mamas, you are raising the next generation of patriots. What an incredible calling we have. I want to just mention on the front here again to if you haven't signed up for our mom memo, which is our weekly newsletter, please go to our website, which is momsforamerica.us. Sign up for the mom memo, check out our website. We have a lot of resources available for you and your family to help you as you help you to be the best mama that you can. We also like, subscribe, share, do all that fun stuff. We are on Instagram, Facebook, and Twitter. We're back up on Twitter. And it'd be great if you could share any of these if you think that this would pertain to a mama friend. We're on Rumble and big news, we are in the Charisma Podcast Network. So, so much fun. We're getting our message out and we're encouraging mamas all over the country. So today, we've got a great guest on. She happens to be a special friend of Moms for America. Let's talk a little bit about what's happening across the country, right? Moms all across the country are showing up in droves at their school board meetings, right? We've seen this on social media. We've seen it everywhere. Maybe you can see in the DOJ call us domestic terrorists. Ridiculous, right? But moms are looking for answers. They're demanding change and they're holding their school board leadership's feet to the fire. We've got CRT, we've got mask mandates, we've got horrible sex education, which is pornographic. We have all of these issues colliding at our schools, attacking our kids, and moms are furious. Some moms are deciding to be a part of the answer and they're running for their school boards. Well, moms have, many moms have never run for their school board office. Many moms have never gone to their, their school board meetings, but they are showing up and they are making a difference and they are running. Like we've been saying, we believe that moms are going to save this country. And today's guest is one of those mamas because she has really taken a leap of faith. I remember talking to her early in this journey when she told me she was considering it and she was like, I don't know if I can do this. Well, heck, she has done it. Samantha Hall is a mom from Pennsylvania. She's been a part of our signature program called the cottage meetings, which inspires and empowers moms as they learn about liberty and about her history. It really does inspire moms to take a next step. She ran for her school board seat in Southern York County. She said that she gained the knowledge and the courage from the cottage meetings and she knew that God wanted her to step up and make a difference in her community. So she ran for the school board and yes, she won. There's not always a winner, but there was a winner on this one. We love it. This is a brand new experience for her. I can't wait to get all the details. This is going to encourage and inspire you. Welcome to the Moms for America podcast, Samantha. How are you?
Oh, I'm great and I'm so excited to be here. Thank you so much.
Congratulations on the win.
Yeah, I'm still pretty excited. It happened on November 2nd and we just had our victory party with our campaign team on Saturday and it was awesome. We had over 70 people there and it was just so much fun. Yeah, everybody is just feeling our community reconnecting, which is just really beautiful.
I love it. Hey, would you tell us real quickly about your family and in your kids and introduce us to the halls?
Sure. So my name is Samantha. My husband's name is Douglas. He's a golf course superintendent and has done that forever. So I always like to compare myself to being deployed in the summertime because I don't see him very much. But it, you know, a little different for us. And my kids are, my oldest Jacob is a senior in high school. So we're getting ready to go through that whole milestone of graduation and post, post-high school. My daughter Elizabeth is in 10th grade and she's, does gymnastics and she's, you know, excited to be back in school because, you know, we were out for about 18 months with hybrid here in Pennsylvania, or at least in my particular district. And then my youngest Sammy is in 7th grade and he is an up and rising lacrosse player. And they're just, you know, it's, it's, I, I have loved every age that they've been, but this has been a really fun age span because I feel like I'm really getting to know who they're becoming and who, what God's plans are for them and kind of what their talents are. So it's been really awesome.
It is incredible to watch your kids develop and grow and become their own person, you know? We never, we're always guiding and protecting and teaching and loving and, but they are becoming their own. It's, it's, I've got, I've got that happening over here too. It's, it's great to watch.
That's awesome.
So let's talk a little bit about how you got introduced to the cottage meetings. You joined our virtual cottage meetings, which if, for the moms out here, let me just mention this on the top. Momsforamerica.us, we have a signature program called the cottage meetings, which goes through the 12, through the principles of liberty. It's 12 lessons, 12 presentations. They're inspiring, they're encouraging. Right now, we're doing them virtual every week and you, but, but you can also leave them in your community. So they're, they're just a great class, if you want to call them, where you just learn and become so strong in who you are as an American that you start teaching it to your kids. And, and when we know, when we get educated, right? We, we want to do something with that. We teach our kids, we get out in our community, we, we make a change. So this is what happened with you. Tell us, how did, how did you find the cottage meetings?
So that's really interesting. I think I actually had signed up to be on the mailing list. I, I want to say maybe five years ago. And I would get the emails and it would, you know, ask about being a hostess and I just felt, because again, my kids were younger at that time and I was doing more volunteer work in the school. I just didn't feel I had the capacity for it, but my grandfather was a survivor from Pearl Harbor and he has since passed and I really wish he were around so I could ask him questions. But anyway, he always instilled this patriotism in me. And so what had happened is after seeing some emails and seeing some emails, January 6 occurred and I was watching like probably everybody else and we were not actually in Washington DC. And I was just stunned at what happened and the way that the press characterized everything because I had friends that were there and they weren't saying anything like that. And I have to be honest, Debbie, I was really distraught. I mean, it was, I just didn't know what to make of it. I felt like everything was sort of surreal. And I, I think it was just literally a week or so after that, I received the invitation to do this virtual meeting and I was thirsting so much to just be able to make sense of what's going on. Thirsting, really thirsting. And I, I wanted, I just, I didn't really know anything about it, but I thought, you know what? I'll try it. And I do think it was a God moment because as you know, for my journey, this was a really pivotal piece to where I am today.
So you signed up for the cottage meetings, you got involved. Jaleen Jackson, who is our other vice president, she teaches these every week and she is a heck of a teacher. I mean, you really do walk away every week just feeling like, wow, I learned something. I was with, I was with all my girlfriends. We're going to teach this to our kids and it is so inspiring. When you learn about our history and you learn about our heritage and you learn about the freedoms that we have, it just makes you want to do something. And for everyone, it's going to look different. So when we talk about you running for school board today, this doesn't mean that if you're not running for school board, you're not doing what you should be doing because all of us are going to have a different look and a different way of changing our world, you know? So, so what happened to you as you listened to these, to these teachings? I mean, where did you go? So now you sign up, you're loving the classes and all of a sudden now it's like you're, you start considering, thinking about running for school board? What was happening?
Like really quick, because the, I want to say that the first meeting was in January, maybe like the 13th or the 26th, right? And so by February, I had discerned that I was going to be running for school board. And what had happened with it and why that kind of quick decision is, honestly, virtual cottage meetings or virtual, any kind of meetings are kind of a hard format sometimes because the engagement is sometimes awkward when people come together and they don't know each other. But this is really where Jaleen shines. She is so warm and inviting and you just feel so comfortable with her. And she has this just beautiful way that she talks, but really even more than that, the first cottage meeting that we had, we talked about St. John of Arc. And St. John of Arc was always so important to me because my mom's name was Joan. And so coming from Catholic school, you know, it was always important that you picked a patron saint. And I didn't pick Joan. I actually picked Elizabeth Ann Seaton. But Joan was always really important to me because of my mom and her story is really, you know, pretty, pretty intense in that she really believed for what she was doing and, you know, suffered a very martyrdom type of death. And so when she started with that story and she, I just, I'd never heard the history told from that perspective before. I've heard history in timestamps. I've heard history in periods, but the way that she was able to weave stories together from France to America, you know, to England was amazing. And I didn't even really know that I liked history until I started attending these meetings.
Exactly how I feel. My husband is just a big history buff and I always like, oh yeah, I mean, I know, you know, but now when, when someone is so captivating like Jaleen or you, 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 you tie into the right type of, of teaching, it really does capture you.
It does.
Like you said, and you were thirsty. I mean, I, I think we're all, we get to a certain point, right? In our life or our journey and we're like, this is what I need now. Or, or I see things differently, you know? As moms, in different seasons of our life, we see things differently. And for you, this was this season that it really struck you. What, what was happening at your school board that you would even, is this because of the virtual? Was there things happening with your leadership? What was happening at the school board in your area?
Um, so for us, I would say, you know, we, we have a, just to give you context, we have a pretty small school district. The way that Pennsylvania is set up is different than other states and that we have districts in our municipalities. So what that means is, you know, coming from Baltimore where I lived for a long time, there were about 110,000 students in the Baltimore County School District. But being back here in Pennsylvania where we're from, there are 501 school districts in Pennsylvania. So our particular school district is really small in the sense that we have 3,000 students across three elementary schools, one middle school and one high school. And quite honestly, that was part of the reason why we moved back to Pennsylvania was we felt like we wanted to be able to have a voice, right? Just to be able to be in a smaller cluster than, you know, something where you have 110,000. So for me, I think what one, what, what caused me to consider it is that I just saw the decisions that were being made because of COVID. And I guess my heart really went out to the board because I, I knew instinctively that nobody had ever really been through something like this before and that when they had, you know, you know, gone for their election to do this, nobody could have ever thought that we would be coming up upon if I'm like this.
You would be dealing with these questions and these challenges, of course.
And so I just felt like my background in communications and marketing, I've done a lot of board development. I felt like I had a lot of skills that would be useful in that. But I also have, you know, experience as a parent, experience as a board member, just marketing and problem solving and all of those things. So I thought that I would have a really unique skillset that could help a board in a time such as these.
Nice. So now you decide, you talk to your husband and you tell everybody at the cottage meetings, I think I'm going to run. And they're all like, yay! Because you've got that nice support staff, right?
Exactly.
Support team, I should say, not staff, but support team.
Right.
So now, now you're going to do it. So you put your hat in the ring and get your signatures. What was your experience like?
Um, so that was also really interesting because you do have to get your signatures, right? You have to get these. And so here in Pennsylvania, you know, we have to get so many signatures and they have to, you know, be matched and so forth. And so basically the guidance they give you is if you need, you know, 20, you want to get, you know, 30 because you want to allow for any signatures that may not be.
You always want to get double.
Absolutely. So I actually went and had all my signatures checked by somebody else that was on the board, just to make sure that I did everything I was supposed to be doing. I was feeling.
Because you're new.
Yes. Yes. So it was wonderful that I had that current board mentorship to be able to do that. And I would say within a week after turning in my signatures, I got a call that I was to appear in court because somebody was challenging my signatures. So that was.
That was a new thing and that, that does happen. That's some of the, some of the politics that go on when you run for office, people challenge you. So now you, your, your signatures get challenged, but they're, they're secure. So you're good.
Yep. So I move on. So the, the cool thing that happens is we're in and about April right now, right? And so I'm starting to assemble my tribe, my team, you know, my campaign team. And I had a woman who ironically, her last name is Hall, Mary Lee Hall. She was supporting me and doing everything she could. And one day I had a talk with her and I said, you know, Mary Lee, this is, this, you know, being on the board, it's going to be a thing because I'm coming into it with, you know, a certain skillset and a certain idea about parental rights. I mean, this is really before the whole parental rights issue came up, but because of the way that we were handling COVID, I felt like the parent voice wasn't really, you know, being represented. And I said, I'm going to be one on this board of nine. How, you know, how is that going to work? I'm this lone voice in that, in that respect. And so she's a very prayerful woman too. And in fact, she has just now started coming into the cottage meetings. And she's, yes, she's on this last cohort. And she said, Samantha, she said, I prayed about this. She said, what would you think if I ran with you? And I was like, that would be amazing. And so she did. And then after that.
And then there was two.
And then there was two. And then there became three because.
And then there was three.
Then there was three because there was another, there was a dad, actually, Mike Wolford. And he was feeling some of this frustration. He talked to one of our representatives and the representative knew that I was running and said, you know, you want to go talk to Samantha? And so we talked about it and I sort of explained to him kind of how I was running and how I was going to run my campaign and asked him to pray about it. And he did. And he called me, I think that was on a Thursday or Friday. He called me on Monday. And so one became three.
Isn't this incredible? Don't you just love this because you take a leap of faith? You inspire others? I mean, this is really, you know, this is, this is what makes life wonderful, right? When we inspire others and they, they catch the vision and, you know, somewhere deep inside of them, they were thinking about this, you know, probably maybe not to the extent you did, but by you saying yes, other, you've got three people running. I mean, this is great. Now, did all three of you win? I don't know the story with everyone. I know that you did.
Yeah. So I'll, I'll fast forward through that. So basically we go up to the primary. They have to run as write-ins, correct? Because they missed the whole.
Oh, that's right.
Ballot time because we were too late. They, everybody said, nobody's going to win as a write-in. They did not win as a write-in, but they did get a record number of votes, you know, as far as.
Good for them.
So we then had a strategy where we had a board member resign. And so Mike was going to run for his seat. That was sort of, again, another unexpected thing that happened that we didn't know about after the primary. Again, a God thing.
Right. Because things like this happen, we would never know. You never know what opportunities are going to come. What, like you said, somebody may resign, leave, whatever. Okay.
So he, so he ended up running for the special two-year seat and won. And Mary Lee, she was able just through, just going through a process, she was able to get on the ballot in November. She ran unaffiliated. And so she was able to get on the ballot. And so the three of us won.
So through, through tic-tac-toe and all these different things, all three of you made it on.
Yeah. And I, I do want to say that we had really wonderful support from our local senator and from our local representative. I mean, they were very, very helpful.
You needed advice.
Completely. This was, you know, one person running is one thing when you're adding in other people and then you're having to change strategy between your primary to the general election. We really needed that support. And they, you know, we understand here, at least in York County, that the school board elections were really, really important. And so we had a basically, you know, a support from our representative and from our senators for school board elections here in York County.
Wow. What a story.
Yeah.
I can, I can see why your, why your, your victory party was so fun.
Well, can I give you a PS?
Yes.
Okay. So remember how we said one became three?
Yes.
Well, one became three in May and then those three became seven by November because not only with Mary Lee, Mike and myself running for school board, we had a gentleman who I had identified as somebody that would be part of our coalition, which is another topic. And he ended up running for constable. And so we're waiting, there was a ballot issue with that, but he has enough write-in votes to be able to win. So that was another one. And then his wife actually ended up running for judge of elections in their particular township. And then another person that was on our support team ran for inspector of elections. And then we had one last person who ran for auditor of elections somewhere else. It was amazing because here's the thing, this is the thing I just want to share with moms out there. If it's not school board, please look into your precinct committees. Please look into volunteering at the election, you know, whether you're a poll worker, whether you're a judge of elections, whatever that is. It's so important to be able to have that coverage. And I think I honestly had no idea what that even entailed until I went through my own election. So it, all viable things to look into.
I love this story. You know, personally, I, I've always helped with campaigns, been an activist, but then I decided to run for a plane, for a township. And I won, you know, two terms. I was there for seven years as, as a township trustee. And then just recently I ran for county commissioner and won. And.
Congrats.
Yeah. And the thing that's so great about this is, is someone said to me, you're going to love running. You're going to love being a trustee. You're going to love being on the county board. And I kept thinking to myself, I don't know, I just don't like politics. But I've actually absolutely loved it because you really are serving the community. And you know that if you're on a school board, you're, you're standing up for, for the kids, or you're standing up for your community, or you're helping your community and you're serving. There is all kinds of opportunity. I guess that's what I want to get to the point to saying, there's all kinds of opportunity. You know, there's, your, your library is looking for leadership. I mean, there is just chances all around us to serve and to, to better our community. So wow. I mean, I love it. I love that everybody just kind of got in there and said, what can I do?
Well, and the, the thing, so it's wonderful. This is all wonderful. But what's even more wonderful is now we have a really good infrastructure in place for the 2022 elections.
Exactly. So you built your team. And, and that's one thing I want to mention actually right here is MomForce. So we have now a whole, I guess, division, we'll call it, of Moms for America where you can go to our MomForce section, find out about running for school board, get counsel. In fact, Tamara Farah, who is our executive director on this, she will call you and help coach. Samantha Hall will help coach. We are building moms, help to build moms if they want to run for their school board. Also on our MomForce page, there's information that you can see what books should be, you know, what books are in your library, or how to write an email, or how to FOIA, or whatever you want to do with your school board. MomForce is the place to go on our website if you want to get involved in, in running for school board. What's some advice that you would give moms if they want to go ahead and run?
Well, I think one of the things that I learned is that not all school board resources are equal. And so what I mean by that is one of the things that really drew me into the Moms for America was not only talking about the patriotism, but also coming from a biblical worldview and really being able to tie in our faith. And so when I talk about not all resources being equal, I don't, I'm not suggesting that any single one of them are, you know, inferior to another one. I'm just saying that for somebody who is really drawn to Moms for America, I think checking out your MomForce is going to be something that they're going to want to do force first. Because again, it's just grounded in our faith and in our Judeo-Christian worldview that we have, you know, as part of our country. So that was a really important part for me. And again, why I affiliate so closely with Moms for America.
Well, you are one of our shining stars. We're just so proud of you. And we know that there's all kinds of moms that are getting involved and we just want to support you and, and just really give you a big hip hooray because when you actually take the step, I know, I think we talked a little bit earlier last year on the phone and you were like, well, I'm really nervous. I was, you were trying to figure out if you're going to be a state liaison for us and what, what God had. But we really just, if, if we'll just put one foot in front of the other, you're just, you, you'll be surprised what doors God will open up for you and what support teams he'll, he'll bring around and what, what, what impact you can make.
Well, and that's true. And I would say that in addition, when you were talking about what other advice would I want to give, I'm not sure how I had the presence of mind to do it, but I knew in June that we were going to need to assemble families and around our community that could not only be supporters for us, but also be people that we could mobilize when those controversial topics do come up.
Yes.
In terms of curriculum and so forth. And so, you know, I tell the story that we went from one to seven, but then seven, in terms of the people that ran, turned into, we probably have about 150 people that are in our parent coalition.
Absolutely.
And actually not a parent coalition. I would say community coalition because you'd be surprised. The community members, the small businesses, they're very interested in what's going on as well. And we've had small businesses offer us space for our meetings. We had a small business help us with the food for our victory, you know, party. So people, all people in the community are really invested in this. And it's like you said, one person steps up and everybody realizes that there becomes then a momentum and they want to be part of that. So just take that step of faith. That is my number one piece of advice is take the step of faith.
Amen. Really, we do inspire one another. And boy, sometimes that, you know, I'm kind of like, oh, can I do it? And I look at somebody else, I'm like, okay, they can do it. I can do this too. And that just really, really does help us because it's kind of scary out there, you know? And it, it is a big fight out there. And there's a fight for our kids. There's a fight for our country. There's a fight for our communities. And, and really, if we don't step up, who, who is? If, if not us, who? So I'm so, I'm so proud of you. What did you feel? I know you talked in the beginning about what you learned for the cottage meetings. If you were to kind of overall tell the moms about how, I don't want this to be so much a commercial for, for our cottage meetings, but in a way I really do, because I think moms are looking for resources and they're looking, they want to feel like they're grounded, you know, that they got this. And I kind of feel like they get this with the cottage meetings.
Yes. So I would say that when I started off my story and I said I was thirsting for something, I was thirsting to make sense of my world, but I was also thirsting for the confidence to understand our constitution.
Confidence, yes.
And what was, you know, there's all sorts of philosophies out there and there's all sorts of, you know, there's a big movement on justice right now, right? And what does that mean? And I think, you know, when you are going through the cottage meetings, you're learning so much about the founders because there's a lot of stories out there on them that are not true. And you're learning about their hearts. You're reading their source documents. Jaleen does a wonderful job of really just providing so much information in terms of source documents of our founding fathers, of the constitution, just really being able to tell it in a story way. And for me, I needed to have more confidence. I knew that America was special and I knew it was unique, but I didn't know why. And so that helped me learn why.
I love that.
Thank you.
I love that. Wow. Anything else you want to tell our moms before we, we wrap up here? Superstar?
Yeah. So I just, I really would like to encourage you to get on the Moms for America cottage meetings. They are, not only are you learning, but you, because of what you said, Debbie, because everything feels so upside down right now. And I know for me, sometimes.
Craziness.
Yeah. And you feel that the upside downness is the majority of it, but it's really not. You know, people like myself, prior to this, were kind of quiet about my beliefs, you know? I just sort of wanted to do what I needed to do. I had my family.
Right. Nothing was challenging us, right? We kind of were in our own little bubble, in our own community. Things were kind of just, okay. You know, I took my, I took my son out of the government school for the very first time. My other two went through, went through public school. Well, it's, it's, it was really tough in our district. So we had to make that decision. Things are different. And we have to know that moms, we have to know things are different. The educational system is different. They are pushing different curriculum. They have an agenda. There's indoctrination. I mean, things are different and they're very aggressive, very aggressive with our kids.
And I think, you know, just taking the leap, doing the cottage meetings. But I think the other thing too, is when I really started to kind of peel apart, how did we get to this point? And Jaleen does a great job of sort of talking about it from a historical standpoint and kind of over the years, how education has transformed from where it started when the founders were, you know, going to their homeschools or being taught with their tutors or so forth. But the other thing is that is very different, and this is what I was sort of able to wrap my head around, is you have so many people guiding your district that are not your district or not your representative. So you have the teacher's education having influence. You have the, in our case, the Pennsylvania School Board Association giving influence. You have the Superintendent's Association giving influence. And so where we were really feeling like our platform needed to be for standing for parental rights, it was because everybody else has a voice and those voices were crowding out the parent voices. And we need to assert ourselves and let people know like, this is all great and everything that you have, all of this, you know, that you wanted to do, do within your schools. But it's like everything else. Every district has to be made up of a community. And there may be some communities where they may want some things that are coming that way. And there may be some other communities that say, you know what? We really don't want any of that. And so again, the cottage meetings, again, I, I just, it just gave me confidence to be able to understand that. And I'm a person that I need to understand a framework before I engage. And it gave me the framework to be able to confidently engage.
And you sure did. I love it.
Thank you.
We all, we all need to, to be, to be growing and really learning. And boy, if you can, if we can get our foundation secure and understand the blessings and the freedoms that we have here that God has given us, that changes us and then we change our, we help to change our family and to change our community and to be a blessing and an encouragement and a, and a world changer. So.
Because liberty begins at home.
At home. Yes. Liberty begins at home. That is so true. And we are the ones that are teaching our kids. And we cannot, we cannot take a backseat to any of this right now. In fact, it's times, it's time for us to rise up and say, I'm the parent, school, school, school board teacher, you know, you're dealing with the mamas, right? The mamas are here and they have, they are wide awake. You know, you're dealing with the mamas, right? The mamas are here and they have, they are wide awake in a good way.
Yeah. And that's the one place where, you know, as I think, you know, a, a wife, you know, will, will kind of do, do our things and we'll stand back. But as you know, when it comes to our children, that's when we really step up. That's right.
That's it. Well, thank you. Congratulations. Would you please say congratulations to the whole team out there? And a special hello from Moms for America. We appreciate what you're doing and just love, love what you're doing. And we're so proud of you, Samantha.
Thank you so much, Debbie. Have a great day.
Okay. Isn't that a great story, moms? Just remember, if Samantha can do it, you can do it. And God's got, I'm, I'm sure he's got some beautiful challenges for you in your community, in your school district, whatever it is, when you're church, in your home, you know, he's going to, he's going to give you the strength that you need to be who you should be as a mama, right? In your home and your community. So again, stop by our MomsForAmerica.us, visit our cottage meetings, sign up. You can host one in your area. You can do it virtually. All the information literally is on our website. And also MomForce, that is all about taking back your school board, running for office and being impactful in your child's education. So that's all on our website. So thanks, moms, for joining us. Please subscribe and share the podcast. You may have a mama friend who's thinking about running for school board or getting active at some level. I'm sure she'd love to hear Samantha's story. It was so inspiring. We believe that you moms, you are the heartbeat of your home. Stay strong, stay focused, be healthy. We just absolutely love you. We believe that you are going to change the world one home at a time. So be blessed and I hope to see you soon. Thanks.